Please join us in standing and beginning with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Begin with public comment. Seeing that there's no public comment, we'll move on to reading of norms with someone.
As a board, we will focus on the student outcomes, be open-minded, respect each other, value different viewpoints, be responsive and responsible to our community, make decisions based on data and facts, listen to each other, be reflective, run meetings that respect time, have concise agendas, are transparent, and follow Robert's rules.
Thank you, Julie. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of our regular meeting on December 9?
I move to approve those minutes.
Motion made by Julie.
Seconded.
Seconded by Scott. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, six zero. Okay. We need to move on to board organization and elect a vice chair.
Now, this will be for just two meet, you know, for February and...
And our February, yeah, our two meetings in February.
Yep, that's it.
Right.
Then he'll do it again in March.
Right.
I'd be willing to do it.
Motion for Julie made by Diane.
Seconded.
Seconded by Corey. Are there any other nominations? Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
You abstained?
Yeah.
Go ahead, she should vote for myself.
Okay, so, do you have that, Celeste?
Yes.
Okay. Motion approved, five, what is that, five zero one?
Five zero one.
Okay. And we need to appoint a representative to the BRSU board.
And I forgot about that last meeting. I said I could all look into it and I'll do it. It's just for one meeting. Just for one more meeting, okay. Do you know what the... Because I think it's their, Michael would know, is it the 30th, U2?
The 30th is the interview one, but...
Right, the 30th is the interview.
Okay, and do you have anything else after that?
I don't remember. You got it there? Because I don't have it here. This is my Medowee book.
I know. No, I don't see anything popping up on... I was just supposed to go check in case like I knew I had a conflict with a meeting until I heard it. I don't know.
Nothing's in February.
Just the 30th.
That was the only planned meeting that I can recall.
Until like March or something, maybe. Yeah, so it will, yeah, then it's reorganization in March and then it's all selected again anyways.
Right.
So it's one meeting.
Motion made by Julie for Corey to be representative for the BRSU board. We had a second, seconded by Michael. Any other nominations? Any discussion?
All those in favor?
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion approved, six zero. Okay, Jackie, turn it over to you.
Okay. What if we go through this first, you think, is anyone share this?
Yeah, I think so.
I think that makes the most sense. Okay. So, Sue's going to take you through, if you start looking on packet page six and through the highlights of the budget, and then we do have a proposed changes that we have to your budget, and we'll talk about that afterwards, but let's go through the main components of this first.
Okay, so you remember last time there were a few missing pieces that we didn't have yet, some information from the state, BRSU assessments, those kinds of things. So, all of that information has now been updated. We have the best estimate we can do for equalized pupils at this point, although it's still not frozen from the state. We have our estimated revenues in place, we have our BRSU assessments all in place now because those budgets were voted, and the biggest thing that we were waiting for was the healthcare decision. Some of you have heard about this already. So, the gist of the healthcare decision is it is going to cost us more money for, mainly for staff who previously weren't able to enroll or weren't, they weren't able to elect a tier of coverage higher than single and have it be covered by the district for school year staff. So, there's a distinction in the healthcare decision between teachers and staff. In addition to that, there's also an HRA that's now being offered. Right now, we offer HSAs and the HRA, we do expect it to cost us a little more money as well. So, what we've done is included 80% of the HRA expected cost for that half a year period because this doesn't go into effect until January of '21. So, we've included 80% of the HRA rather than 100% of the HRA. The way a health reimbursement account works is, starting January 1, all of our healthcare deductibles start, go back to zero, and we're starting fresh, and then the district covers the first up to $42 or $4,400 a year for 12 months, depending upon what kind of employee you are, of whatever your out-of-pocket costs are when you go to the doctor. So, you're meeting your deductible with Blue Cross Blue Shield, and the district is going to say, okay, we're going to pay for that instead of you having to pay for that. So, that's how an HRA would work. We have no way of knowing how much people will dip into their HRAs in that six-month period, but since it is the beginning of the calendar year, we're budgeting at 80%. For some people, that's going to be high, for some people, it's going to be low, because some people will use 100% in January, you know, depending upon what their healthcare needs are. We don't have that information yet, but VHI has said they're going to share it with us. So, I'm hopeful that after we get through this sort of first budgeting round, when we're budgeting for this in the following year, we'll have a better handle on it.
The HSAs work before...
So, the HSA is a health savings account, and what that is, instead of it being an employer plan, it's an employee plan. We put money into the plan on behalf of the employee, and then they spend it on qualified healthcare expenses. It's not just the portion of paying their deductible from Blue Cross Blue Shield, it's also if they go to the chiropractor, or acupuncture, or the dentist, or vision care, lots of other things you can use that money for. Plus, it belongs to the employee, so they can save it and spend it as they see fit versus if they don't go to the doctor at all during the year, then they don't see the benefit of that employer HRA. On the other side, if they do, we are paying out for all of that. It's a benefit to us, obviously, if they don't, we don't have to pay for that money. So, they, they're just two completely different plans. One's an employer plan, the other one belongs to the employee.
But they, the cost-wise, is that different?
Yeah, the HRAs in the health decision is more money than we were providing in an HSA.
So, we have just a lower number?
We had a lower number with respect to HSA, but the way we were allocating the coverage of the premiums is different. And, and again, remember, there's a distinction between teachers and staff.
What were we contributing HS, what was our HSA figure?
It's different depending upon what tier of coverage you have, and it's different depending...
But to compare apples to, to pair the same tier, like, is it, so, so you're basically just contributing to the savings account. It happens to be a health savings account.
Right now, correct.
And that teacher, if they didn't use it, then it goes, it's money that grows.
They didn't lose it, right?
Right, it's theirs, it goes into their pocket immediately. Correct.
In the, in the HRA, is there a certain allocation that if they don't use rolls to the next year, or does it wipe clean?
No, it's on an annual basis.
Because I know they're different, I know in some places they do.
Yeah, and this, the way the decision works is you get this much money per year.
If you don't use it?
You don't use it, you've lost it, and you start fresh again in January.
Got it.
Which, which differs from the HSA, which functions more like...
Like a bank account, yeah, exactly, exactly. So, so what we've included in the budget is an estimate for, a really conservative estimate for what we feel you're going to pay for your current staff for HRAs. And that is on packet page six, that $18,000 figure, about three-quarters of the way down the page, that last sentence under healthcare. So, that's what we've got in the budget. What we didn't include is above that is $105,000 for what potentially could happen. What we did is we ran a model, if we said all of the support staff that work in the districts were to choose tiers of coverage similar to the elections of our teachers. If they were all to enroll the same percentage, people took family plans, took parent and child plans, what would that look like financially? And in Medowee, it would be about $105,000. So, we didn't include that in your budget, because we can't know if people are actually going to switch and say, okay, now that the district is going to pay for a family plan for me, I want one. We don't know if that's going to happen. It is likely to happen, but we don't know for sure, and we don't know who would choose that, how many people might continue to not elect coverage and continue to take the insurance stipend which we offer to staff. So, we don't know the answers to those questions yet. You guys have a lot of money in tax stabilization reserve, so rather than put money into this budget that we don't know that we're actually going to have to spend, we can draw from the tax stabilization reserve if we end up in a deficit situation next year because of those kinds of elections.
And this 105 would be the worst-case scenario, so to speak? If everybody signed on?
No, it's not the worst case. It's, it's the, it's the comparable elections, coverage, election of coverage to what our teacher population currently elects. The worst-case scenario would be if everybody that was eligible took a family plan. I didn't model that out because it's really unlikely to happen, but that would be more expensive. And also, keep in mind that that $105,000 is based on a six-month time period, not an annual time period. So, hopefully, this time next year, we will be in open season. Open season is in January, that's when people will be making these election changes in November, December, for a January 1 or February 1 election date next year. Hopefully, we'll have enough information from staff to actually know for FY '22, how many people actually elected that change and what is it going to cost us.
But this projection of 105, this estimated projection of 105 is for a six-month period?
Yes.
But you're saying...
And the 18 is also for a six-month period?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so you're anticipating our costs going up by 18,000 with this new budget? And that's for a six-month period?
It could be, it's going to be more. It will be more, but we don't know how much more. We don't know if it's going to hit that 105, too. So, we know the 18 for sure, but you've got, you've got also have a, you have the potential for, we're estimating 105, an additional $1,000, 105 additional $1,000.
That's not a low and a high, then, that's, you're actually, so the 18 is, that's what we're doing now, but it's actually going to end up going up 105?
It could.
It could, and it could go higher, and it, and remember, the 18 isn't, it's not set in stone, because it includes assuming an 80% usage of HRAs, which also may or may not happen, right? So, there's, there are some costs that we are just going to incur regardless, but this is really guessing game right now, right? When you deal with HRAs, you just don't know. And, and the other thing to keep in mind is going down the line, we really aren't going to know what our experience is going to be for a few years, because HRAs are not paid out when it happens. So, if you think about it, when you go to the doctor, when you go to the hospital, how long does it take for you to get that Blue Cross Blue Shield claim that actually comes to your door? Two months, three months, six months sometimes, right? That's how long it's going to take for us to pay out HRAs. We could be paying out an HRA in a fiscal year, six months after somebody left employment for us. We could pay out a double HRA in one fiscal year, because HRAs are paid out on a calendar basis, but we pay out on, we have somebody employed on a fiscal year which runs over two calendar years. So, you could hire somebody in September, they're entitled to their HRA, and then they use it up, and then January comes around and they use that, too. You're also going to have people that don't touch their HRA, because they're healthy and they don't go to the doctor. So, hopefully, that will balance out. But, but there's no way to budget for the usage of these funds. So, what people have been saying statewide is they all have, now that there are some districts that already have used HRAs, and, and we've seen estimates of about 67% up to over 80%, so that's why we chose the 80% figure to be conservative for the start. Plus, we're only looking at a six-month period, so...
We had no, I mean, just to simplify the whole thing, we didn't really have a choice in this, right?
No, we had no choice, no. This is a statewide decision that everybody is wrestling with.
So, we're reporting what it's doing, but it's not like it was, there's nothing we can do about it.
We came up with a methodology of how we wanted to put the numbers together, and we're using that for all of our budgets.
So, we would still have to deal with this if we were the previous UD 47, et cetera, et cetera.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. This is statewide.
Okay.
So, that's really the biggest thing that I have to talk about. I, as I said, I have put the assessments, the final assessments in the budget, so if you want to turn to packet page 13, and we can start with early education, you see that assessment at the bottom line, that site assessment under early education on packet page 13 going up by 15%. And I just wanted to mention that the actual staff that are part of that assessment, that hasn't changed. There's a teacher in, in your early ed site here at the school that works out of the supervisory union, because they also provide special education services, and that, there, nothing has changed in that program, but we do allocate to offset some of those costs, what's called an early education block grant. We get that money from the state of Vermont, and that money changes from year to year. That money went down at the SU level this year. In addition to that, Medowee's percentage share of enrollment went down a little bit, too, when compared to the whole SU. So, not only did the block grant go down a little, but your share of that draw from the block grant went down a little, and that increases your assessment a little bit. So, it's not that there's more costs associated with more services or any changes like that, it just has to do with revenue that offsets your assessment coming from the SU. As far as the elementary program goes, I don't have anything more to share with you. There are no changes in that program from what we presented last time around, outside of the assessments, obviously, because they are included in that program. And on packet page 14, the secondary program, we've updated...
I just, sorry.
Yep, go ahead.
On 13 again, I think I know the answer to this, but I would just like confirmation.
Sure.
The 1,115, the salary for paras went up a lot. That's because of the decision that we made last year, right, to...
Yeah, yeah. So, you guys, they, they have, the, the paras joined the contract, right? So, there's, there was two things that happened. One, there's a change in medical insurance, and also, there's a change in salaries.
Okay.
So, on the secondary program, we've gone in and finalized sort of where we think secondary is going to land, and what you guys saw last time pretty much stayed the same, where we have increased, packet page 14. We have increased tuition students this year than what we budgeted for. And we also do have that shift of students who were, who previously might have attended New York schools, now attending BBA or Long Trail. And so, we, I took a quick look at FY '18, the year before the merger, what the budgets looked like for F, for Paul and Rupert, and we had about the same number of secondary kids. We had, there was a difference of one student when you added those two budgets together, but the percentage of kids going to the New York schools was higher, so...
So, our, our enrollment at the secondary level is the same, essentially?
Is the same as it was a few years ago. Yes, just where the kids are going.
Students are choosing to go.
So, we had a, 47% are going to New York schools now versus 61% going a few years ago. So, we are seeing that shift, and we predicted that, right? When we talked about the merger and had shared that information.
Yeah, I think we predicted 25%.
47% versus 61% two years ago?
Yeah, I mean, we, we were, when we shared what that might do to the taxes, we were doing it sort of in 25% increments, and so, it's about that 23% shift of the number of students that previously were attending New York schools that are no longer attending New York schools. No changes to the health program. And same goes to library media, but you remember, last time we talked about, we are shifting some costs over to the supervisory union budget for tech, costs that are being, are included, now included in the assessment for technology. And the final BRSU assessment is there at the bottom of the page. Packet page 16, school admin, fiscal services, building operations. I finalized some costs for the copier, for the telephone, for fuel. You know, we've done our, our projections for those numbers based on what we've been experiencing and, and estimates for next year.
Why did the fuel go up so much? Just the price per gallon, or...
Yeah, so, we go out to bid on fuel every year, and so, yeah, the price did go up a little bit this year, and I think last year, and I expected to this year, use a little more fuel. We were, it was a little cold last year, I believe we used a little more than we originally predicted. This year, that 23, we're, again, a little conservative, it might be 1,000 or two high, it depends on how much we end up actually use. This is based on what we expect to buy. So, if we don't use it all, then we will remove some of that, and it gets, it gets saved for next year.
Relative to, on the operations line, 422, did a reg change relative to the 40% increase with the water testing?
I believe there's some more testing that they do, right, Brooke?
Yes.
Yes, and so, we had increased costs last year, so I'm basing this year on our experience last year.
Just more mandates a state's asking us to do, which costs more money to...
Of course. And the medical is up because of the same thing?
Yeah, so that 39 to 49 that you're seeing is, is the result of the HRAs, yeah, including those costs in the budget. Next page, packet page 17, you have transportation. We talked about why those numbers are going down. We do have a bid in, we did receive a bid, and so, that 266 for the contract, that middle line there for transportation services that you're seeing is based on the bid that we And then we have our special ed services again with the final BRSU assessments in there.
And is the bid with the same provider?
Yep, same company. We did only receive one bid. Greg's gone out to more than one provider, obviously, when he goes out to bid, and we get a waiver from the state to accept the bid from the one vendor that actually responded to us.
Is that, is that mandated in any way in terms of a state? Could it come from New York? No.
Oh, could the bid, could a provider come from New York?
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. But we do, we go out to bid per statute, so we do have to, we have to go out to bid publicly, and if we don't get three bids from, from three different vendors, then we need to let the state know, so they understand our process, and they approve a waiver to allow us to accept a bid from just the one vendor. And that happens, this is not just with bus contracts, this happens with all types of contracts. More than half of the contracts we go out for, we have to get a waiver for, because there just aren't a lot of vendors who are looking for the business, so, we're small. The extracurricular section, we were talking last time around about extracurricular salaries going up and why, and I put a little review for you in the summary as to what stipends we've included in there. And we have reduced areas in the library tech section, there was a stipend that we're not paying out, we pulled money from there, and in the regular ed section, there were stipends that we're not expecting to be paying out this year, we pulled money from there. So, the, the increase that's in the extracurricular for stipends has been offset from other areas of the budget.
And those areas again were?
The library tech, you'll see there's a stipend that zeroed out, and then if you go to the regular instruction, there's a stipend line there as well. What I will mention is that next year, the stip, you'll see the stipend line under regular instruction go back up, and that is for different stipends that are not included in this year's budget or in this year's anticipated figures. And that's to support either PBIS, or Brooke, how would you describe if it's not PBIS?
The social-emotional team to help support our students.
And we have those stipends in the budget for TNG that support every other school. This is the only budget that hasn't had stipends to that effect to have a team working on that, so we've included it next year. And then the food service program, I've tweaked those numbers a little bit based on what we've experienced so far through December. The overall net impact has not changed drastically on the food service program.
And that reduction is partly a result of the more universal distribution relative to the lunch program?
Well, I think there's, there's some reduction of food costs that I think are the result of having, having somebody managing the overall program, but you're also seeing a reduction in expenses just due to a staffing change? And, you know, you're so small that, that's going to affect things pretty easily? Yeah, pretty quickly?
Not solely being driven by the benefit of more quantity, so to speak?
Right, right, partially, though, definitely. And then the last item is the warrant article for building reserve. I did include in your packet a summary of what Greg is anticipating for projects, so now might be a good time to just hit that real quick, and that's on packet page 22.
Can I just, sorry?
Yeah, no, go ahead.
On page 17, packet page 17, under special ed, can you just explain to me for probably the millionth time, the, like, the paraservice fees, and those fees, and then the, the BRSU separate assessments for K to six and seven to 12?
Sure, on that first line, so the paraservice fees from the SU, we have a bus assistant that works with a high school student, so that's something that this district would cover. So, just to back up a second, paraeducators, it was decided back when special ed was consolidated, that paraeducators would be the responsibility of the local districts. So, that was just sort of decided across the board. So, sometimes, we're going to have paraservices that you're not actually going to be employing the para, and, but because we decided that paraservices would be a local responsibility, whenever they're hired elsewhere, they're still billed back to the district that's receiving the service. So, in this case, that's what you're seeing on that first line. On that last line, that district service fees, the 592, those would be paraservices for students that you're tuitioning to other public schools. So, for example, you may have a student that attends Dorset or Manchester, who's in seventh or eighth grade, who has paraservices in their IP. That district also hires their own paraeducators, but since the, they're providing services to your student, then you're billed those, those special ed services, but you're only billed for that para time. The special educator is out of the BRSU spot assessment, is included in those numbers below, and TNG wouldn't bill you for that. Okay? So, the BRSU assessments, you said, the student services K to six, eight, versus maybe the next line, is that what you're thinking of?
Yeah, this was...
Right, so that first line is, is, those are the services that are provided by staff in our schools, as well as services provided to students who are of a grade level to attend one of our schools. Maybe they're not, though, maybe they're at a private therapeutic setting, but they're in fifth grade and would normally have gone to one of our schools, but we're putting them in a different placement. So, all of those costs associated with students at grade levels that we operate are included in that part of the assessment. The next part of the assessment is where all of our choice students might go, so it says seven slash nine, because you guys are seven through 12, and TNG is nine through 12, and those are the costs associated with those students. They're different, because those seven slash nine through 12 students really are billed on an individual basis, right? It's every single student has a cost associated with them, versus the K to six, eight, where we're providing the majority of those services, so we have some level of control over, over whether, when students increase or decrease, we're still able to keep our same staff level.
And I want to go back up to, because I know you asked it, Julie, and, and we've put an executive session if you have more questions, because it, because it's a small population of students, but if you look at the ineligible service and fees under 1,100, 500, that's a result of this board last year, I think it was last year, approved the non-resident tuition for students of staff members, and we told you if any special ed costs were incurred, that would be the responsibility of this district. They could not be shared in an assessment, so that's what that is.
And that's kind of a, a first, so to speak. There's no other information available there, because that had never been done before.
That's correct.
We were on packet page 22, just taking a quick look at the reserves. So, Greg's taken a look at the projects that are within the next few years, what he sees needing to be done. So, I'm giving you FY '18 actuals, where we, where we landed at the end of FY '18, and what we did last year by project, so then what our fund balance is at the start of this year, which was 429,000. We did paving, he's expecting to do some siding this year, that's the 142 in the middle of the page there, and the five, and that brings us down to 282. And then he's got three projects scheduled for the future, flooring, painting, and the roof, which is a big one. So, after we spend all that money, we will be in the hole, so we need to start raising a little money. So, $40,000 over the next few years will give us enough to cover the immediate needs that Greg has projected right here, as well as giving us at least a $100,000 cushion, which I don't think we want to be without, basically. Forty maybe too low, you know, you guys may want to think about going higher, maybe this isn't the year to do that. I think forty is as low as we should go, to make sure that we maintain money in the
And that's all I have for you, unless anybody has any more questions.
I had a question that I, probably doesn't have a brief answer, but I was hoping for, just to kind of, and again, to echo Julie, I probably asked this or it's come up before, but what are the divided, what has changed? but what are the divided, what has changed in terms of what the merged district is covering as compared to what had previously been in the Metawi?
So if I'm comparing UD forty-seven, just the K to six school, to what you are now, what's different is that the secondary program, all the costs that were associated with the seventh through twelfth graders have been pulled into one budget. So that's, that's really the distinction. I mean, they're, they're.
And they're shared.
But, but are they not administrative services and things that the BRSU or that?
Well, all of those services existed before, right? So, so I mean, yeah, they're shared, and they're shared in one tax rate.
The students are shared in one tax rate, and that is different.
Oh, yeah, of course, yeah. Yeah, how the towns are paying for it is different, yeah. But with respect to what's actually in the budget, just because of the merger, there's, there's, I mean, I can't think of any costs that, there were, there were, there are operations that have changed, but it's not specifically because of the merger here, right? So we know, we've talked about operations with respect to the building and transportation and food service. We've got different things happening with technology and curriculum. That doesn't have anything to do specifically with the merger.
So it really is the addition of the secondary students.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's just taking all three of those budgets really and adding them together.
Well, yeah, I mean, we had all the same, they were just not in one budget.
Exactly, exactly. And then that one budget, as Jackie said, produces that single tax rate for you.
And I think too, what's, we knew, we predicted it would happen, that your costs would increase because students would make different choices at secondary, and it's, and it's exactly what we predicted would happen. And I think the challenge for the two communities is that because that, you know, you had the designated school situation, you just did have a much lower tax rate for years. So when I look at your tax rate, I'm like, yeah, that looks good if I compare it to other places. But it's going to, you know, it's quite a shift for your communities to get to that place.
From the previous one, it is completely detached from any reality that almost any other town in the state would have been dealing with.
Correct, so I think the average tax rate last year, what was it around?
One fifty-one.
One fifty-one, so.
Average, in the state.
In the state, yeah. So we don't have the average for this year, I can tell you that. You know, I've been to a couple of state level meetings and folks are really seeing a bump, everybody is feeling this pain and this pressure for enough, for two reasons. One being a declining enrollment, so you know, and fewer equalized pupils, which you're experiencing also, and, and then the healthcare costs. So those two factors have had an impact on everyone's budget this year. So it's going to be interesting to see how this plays out for everybody.
We, compared to the other parts of the state, are we maintaining our student population a little better than average though?
No.
No?
No, I mean, I think over the decade, I don't know if I brought that with me, the last ten years, you've had a decline. I think you were, I think maybe at two thousand and eleven, if I'm remembering correctly, you were around one sixty-five, one sixty-seven, or you're at one fifty right now.
No, I gave it to Jackie.
Yeah.
Yeah, one sixty, unremembered, around one sixty-five, one sixty-eight.
One sixty-five, and now you're at one fifty.
You had been in the high sixties, you moved up to one seventy-something, and then you started dropping back down, down to that one forty-nine, so, yeah.
Including pre-K, the highest year since I was a principal was like two oh six, we had it one time.
Right, but you can't really include pre-K in that.
Yeah, right, right, right.
Yeah, yeah. So, so that's the pressure you feel too. So that kind of, kind of brings us to the next conversation we want to have with you, is that we have just of, in the last couple of days, just of this past weekend, communications with Brooke. We have, we had also, I think if you remember, this board approved a plan to use attrition when it made sense to reduce staffing at the school. So by that I meant if a teacher resigns or leaves their position, that we would take a hard look at our enrollment numbers and see if we needed to rehire to fill that position. So I think that we're going to anticipate, we're anticipating, we're not anticipating, we know, we have confirmation of at least one position here and possibly two at this school, but we are, I've spoken with Brooke, and we feel that, we feel comfortable in not filling one of those positions. So I think that's the right thing to do. I still think you're, when I look at your, we had a meeting with the principals today, we looked at your student to teacher ratios across the SU, and you are one of the lowest in the SU for the students to teacher ratio. And it was twelve and a half students per teacher?
Classroom teacher.
Per classroom teacher? Yeah, twelve and a half. So I think that you have capacity to, to grow that a little bit. So that being said, Sue did some great work today, I'm going to pass, I'm going to send around. We've got a new cover sheet here, and, and then a new tax rate sheet if we were to do that.
That's going into this budget?
Yeah.
Yeah, so revision to what you just looked at to exclude one position.
So for seven point eight to six percent.
I want you to go through all this.
Oh, I get it.
It's still not going to be pretty, but it's prettier.
It is a little prettier, just, just a little.
It's a little prettier.
A little, yep.
So, I mean, and I think the part, I think you want to notice, so I'm first, I'm looking at the, this, this sheet that kind of gives you the overview of expenditures, and you'll see it's your, your K, where you're seeing that drop, your K six instructional support in your original budget, which was packet page ten, that was a five point six change from budget to budget, and now you're looking at a point one percent. Okay, so that's where you're going to see the drop. And the tax rate, it does reduce the tax rate by three cents, is that right?
I don't have the tax rate in front of me from what went out in the packet.
Total budget down almost two percent, right?
Two cents, two, two point nine cents total.
Two point nine cents, three cents.
Yep.
So reduction close to three, three cents in the tax rate, which is nothing to, you know, ignore, I don't think.
And, and since everybody has this new tax rate, I didn't want to talk about this until we were actually looking at what, this, this sort of last tax rate projection. One of the things that's in that projection is the use of some of your tax stabilization. So I, I just want everybody to sort of think about that after you do vote on a budget and make a decision, then we can talk about whether you're comfortable with the amount that I'm drawing as, as, you know, a recommendation from tax stabilization, or if you want to do something different, but that doesn't affect what you vote for a budget.
Can you say that one more time?
Sure, so.
Thanks.
I've made a recommendation of how much I think I'd be comfortable with, with you guys using from tax stabilization, and that is what's going to help lower this tax rate, is the use of that money. I've already made a recommendation and included it in this calculation that you're looking at, and we can talk more about that after you vote a budget.
Can you direct them to where that's included?
Well, that's on page twenty-two is her, one of the numbers, like the four hundred and.
Packet page twelve is where you see the, the use of the tax stabilization, and of course, that is brought forward to the tax calculation.
So that's the two sixty-nine, three forty-seven?
Yeah. And that's what you recommend.
It's what I'm recommending right now, yeah.
What did you ask Julie?
Oh, oh, sorry.
What did she just ask? Was it the two seventy, two sixty-nine?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, what, what sheet, where would it correspond on the sheets that you just?
So it's, it's, it's a combination of, if you look at packet page, actually, if you look at the back of the new handout that Jackie gave you, you have page one of your expenditures, and on the back of that, you have your new revenues, right? So your new revenues, it's a combination of the fact that we need to, we have local revenues of five hundred and three thousand dollars. Then we're going to use two sixty-nine from tax stabilization at the very bottom there. Does everybody got me?
I'm trying.
Packet on it. Revenue subtotal towards the very bottom of the page of five hundred and three thousand dollars. All the way on the right, under FY twenty-one.
Got it, thank you.
And then keep going down, and you've got two sixty-nine coming from the reserves. And then we also have to make up that deficit of one fifty-seven that we're anticipating for this year. So those three numbers added together is what is offsetting your voted budget with the warned article to come up with what your education spending figure is on the tax page. I didn't mean to take you off track on that. Doesn't have anything to do with your, with your voted budget itself, but it is something we want to talk about before we finish up our conversation on tax rate.
This budget, as far as healthcare increase?
Correct.
So next year's budget is going to, I mean, your projection was, was, that projection of one oh five was really for half a year.
Yeah, so, so you could probably, you could say if the eighteen occurs, then we're going to be using thirty-six, right? So because we have to double it. And then how much of that hundred and five will actually happen, we just have no way of knowing.
And we could be looking easily.
Be looking at two, yeah, you could be. And, and that's one of the reasons why I would say we don't want to dip too much into tax stabilization. But I also think that you have to, you, you guys know that you want to be able to draw from that as much as possible in future years. If we're taking a quarter of it right now, and if we had to do a quarter of it each year, then that's only giving us four years. We can't say how much of that we'll need. We can't say how many more secondary kids might move in, how many more might shift to go to a different school, how many are going to take advantage of that enrollment opportunity. The decision, the statewide decision is only good for two years, Jackie? So it's not forever, that decision, they're going to have to negotiate again, and depending upon what, what happens.
They could, they could.
I'll hear so much pushback from the state, I can't believe they would, there's no tax cap in this state, right?
I mean, I think what, you know, and again, met with the principals today, we had a heart-to-heart discussion. And I think what's really going to, what I think boards and leaders will need to look at over the next few years is really come to terms with, we've been talking about that declining enrollment, and you know, we still, Vermont has, I think we're number one in the country for what we spend to educate our kids. So I think we're going to have to have some hard conversations about, you know, what are those student to staff ratios? You know, what, what are our staffing patterns? Because that's where the money is. And so I think that, you know, we, we will have to attend to that.
What if, what if our student population just over the course of the next five years did stop going down, and either didn't go down or went up slightly, would that have an impact on the?
Sure, yeah. Sure, your equalized pupilized number increases, then whatever that budget, I mean, yeah, you're not going to have to, if you, if you, chances are, if you had fifty more kids walking into this school, you probably would not have to increase the staffing a whole lot. So you'd increase your equalized pupil number, and then that number that you divide your total, you know, your costs, your edited spending by, you'd have a much larger denominator, so.
I mean, because what did we say in the last, we say it went down like ten or fifteen students or something?
Last decade.
So if we reverse that, say ten or fif, that, that would?
Will help.
Mm-hmm, as if they were here in this building.
Yeah, if they were in this building, if they're in seven to twelve.
But it's still, if you're maintaining a higher number here.
Yeah.
Yeah, it will help. But that would be, you know, that's the big challenge in the state right now, we're not seeing that, you know.
I don't know, I could see that being plausible, I think it'll take a little time, but.
Yeah, I think it's possible in this community, yeah.
Seems like it's starting to happen.
The student capacity of this school is two oh five, or?
We never said capacity, I think, I mean, each classroom, and I think that maybe twenty per classroom-ish, around that number, you know. Right now, we have twelve teachers. Right now, there's a pocket of one fourth grade and one sixth grade. It seems to be always a bubble where there's kind of a smaller group going through. But right now, those two bubbles are the biggest class in our school, we have twenty-ish in both of those grades, so.
In the governor's speech the other day, he described the aging population in Vermont as a crisis, which I guess.
And they're not going to be paying the taxes anymore that the working folks have been paying, yeah.
Yeah. Like over fifty percent of the population's going to be over sixty-five or something, that seemed impossible, but.
Tiring like me, yeah. Not going to pay those high taxes anymore. So I don't know if this is a timely, I would like to know how you arrived at your figure.
Oh, sure, yeah, so, so what I did was I, obviously the deficit, right? And we need to raise the deficit, we need to cover the deficit because we have a deficit this year.
Yeah.
And.
And why is that, again, I just?
Main reason is secondary, we had an increase in secondary students, yeah.
Thank you.
And along those same lines, since that is the main driver of our increased cost for the budget, what I did was I took a look at how many more kids came in than we budgeted for, what is that gap? And I multiplied that by the average cost budgeted for secondary students next year. And I came up with a hundred and twelve thousand dollars approximately, and that's what I added to the deficit. So in doing that simple calculation, just to see what it looked like, to me, it was, it was a significant reduction on the tax rate, right? It's, it's a big reduction on the tax rate, probably around seven cents or more on the tax rate, and eight, probably closer to eight cents. And along with that, I, I think it's, you're not dipping into the fund too much. It does seem like a lot, I mean, it is a lot of money in one year, but a lot of that is due to the deficit, more than half of that is due to the deficit. And that's really what tax stabilization is meant to be. I mean, it is meant not necessarily just to lower your tax rate in that one year, you want to try to keep things as stable as possible. So a deficit is the one thing that's going to take away that stability. If you have to raise a deficit in any one year, then it takes, it takes away the stability because not only is your tax rate going up because your costs are increasing or your students are going down, but then you're also raising a deficit on top of that, so it's kind of like a double whammy. So right, right there, we want to cover that, that goes without saying, that's what the tax stabilization is for. And then I think, given the fact that you have that little extra shift in secondary going on this year, that hopefully we won't see a pattern of that in future years, we don't know, but hopefully we won't. This is the first year we're seeing it. I think it makes sense to use a little bit of money towards that. So that's where I came up with it.
Okay, thank you, makes sense.
That's kind of an important point then, so, you know, you're using that stable, dipping into the stabilization to exactly, to, not just to lower the tax rate, but to stabilize it.
Right, just, right, exactly, to sort of cover those, those isolated costs that are, where we're seeing that little bit of a spike.
And when, when, you know, and this, what's happening is exactly what we anticipated to happen, was that shift to secondary, and that was the intent of the tax stabilization to get us through that period. So, I mean, I think it's meeting its purpose, yeah.
And you mentioned that the, the, the secondary tuition cost could shift yet again. It's what, at about fifteen-six now, or?
Um, you're talking about the tuition that we pay to, out to schools?
Yeah, and like what the statewide average is.
So the statewide average changes, goes up a little bit every year, it's usually around three percent. The statewide average is based on what the union schools in the state announce. So we are one of, right? So we are part of the K to six union school average because we operate a K to six school and we're a union district. I, I usually put a three percent estimate in the budget for that. The BBA rate is much higher than that, but we, we're not paying the BBA rate here. So what you're seeing in your tuition worksheet is public school announced tuition, and then the New York public school tuition. and then the New York public school tuition, and then the private tuition, which is going to be based on the union school average because that's what we'll pay up to. We don't know what any of these numbers are going to be, so it is a ballpark. It's an estimate. And we, but we do put an increase in every year. We don't see those numbers typically go down. For the same reason, you're not going to see your announced tuition go down, unless we have a whole bunch of kids move into the K to six program.
Everybody good? As good as you can be?
Never better, never better.
Yeah.
When somebody's ready, someone should make a motion.
Right.
Just, you know, it's just looking, this is just a quick thing, but on page, packet page nineteen. So I'm reading it right, so it's still, we still have more than half of the students going to the New York State schools?
It's, uh, yeah, well, no. If you were to add the public above and the private below, it's higher than just the New York.
Oh, the pub, the public Vermont schools?
So it's sixty-six to seventy-five if you were to add them, yeah.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, you got to go up there. So, oh, you got ten there.
And if you look at how we budgeted, we budgeted seventy-nine in the New York schools versus the fifty-five in the other schools. And that budget for FY twenty would have been based on what we were seeing actually take place in FY nineteen. So we're, that's how we're seeing that shift, right?
Sixty-six to seventy-three.
This year.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So if we make a motion to approve this budget, it's with these new papers?
If you're comfortable with that number, yeah.
The draft that budget has presented.
That's this one, you mean, the one?
It's with draft two.
Okay.
So it's this fifty-nine, ten.
Motion made by Julie.
Second.
By Michael. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
That's just short for aye, 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 aye.
Warning, five million, eight seventy, oh thirty-eight.
Got it.
Right. Abstention. Motion three, six, zero.
Do we have a new warning?
Okay. Um, yes, Celeste's warning.
Do you have, do you have copies of?
So before we move on to that, the, I just want to get everybody's sort of confirmation that everybody's comfortable with the amount of money that I'm drawing from tax stabilization, and that I will use that when sending information to the state for them to calculate the tax rate, unless we want to put any changes on the table.
We have done that during a discussion, I mean, isn't it?
Well, we, I explained to you how the numbers came up with. I just want to hear from all of you that everybody's good with it. I don't, I don't, I don't need a motion.
I think you explained it well enough to me, so I understood. It was important for me to know your reasoning, because.
Okay, all right, as long as everybody's good with it.
Is everybody else too? Because I was.
It doesn't seem like some kind of huge divergence from what you more or less said was, we could expect was going to happen.
Right, right.
It's just that, you know, people have short memories, and when it actually happens.
It helps lower where we needed to.
Yeah.
So I, I think it's.
Yeah.
A thoughtful use of, and we have a deficit, unfortunately, because, and so.
Yeah.
You know, but that's the way it is.
Sign one.
It sounds like much of the contributing to the deficit comes from powers beyond our humble control.
Got one, everybody?
Yes.
And Celeste, you want me to sign one of these?
No, I have one here.
Another one for me to sign, okay. Got it.
This is the new one, not in the packet.
This is the new one. I'm anticipating that you would go for the revised version of this.
So basically, all that's different is the, what, numbers? Is there any numbers even?
Yep, the voted budget, the education spending, equalized pupil figure, yeah, and that percent change.
And we're meeting at the Rupert Firehouse this year.
Mm-hmm. On the twenty.
What is it, eight?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Thank you. Yep, I see it.
Got it.
Okay, sorry.
So Jane might want to talk about that a little bit.
Okay, you want me to do that now?
Yeah.
Okay. So under Article eleven, the Rupert Director for one year, term expiring February of twenty-one is the final year of my three years because I am resigning effective the end of February. Unfortunately.
This coming.
It's a nice move.
After the meeting?
After the meeting.
Annual meeting?
Well, I just figured I would resign effective March first, essentially. Honestly, I really thought when I ran, I didn't think I'd make it two years. So, you know, you all know, I've, I'm in the process of moving, so. I've really enjoyed my time on the board and wish I didn't have to resign, but unfortunately, I don't think anybody wants someone who's.
Living in New York.
Living in New York on my board. I mean, I don't have a problem with New York. So, anyway.
Jane, I want to thank you for your service and your leadership on that board.
Thank you. I really have enjoyed my time. I really have.
You've done an amazing job as our leader.
Thank you. Thank you. I really, honestly, I have enjoyed it. And I'll be sad to leave, but I'm leaving.
So then we will be, at that point, charged to?
No, sure.
It's right on here, my position, my position. Yeah, that was one of the reasons why I tried to stretch it to this time, was that it, then it doesn't need to be an appointment for a few months. It can be, um, just go right onto the elections.
So this is you, the Rupert one?
That's me.
One-year term exp, okay.
Right. And then, and then the following year, I think it'll be a three-year position.
And then what are the other?
So the three-year term, that's me, because my term is up. And then the one-year term would be Cory filling out Sue's.
Yeah.
Are you both running?
Yeah, I'm filing papers.
Okay. Okay, good.
So we just.
I have confirmation that no one in my household will vote for me.
She's like, I don't like you going to these meetings.
That's great.
And I'm glad you're like, oh, wow.
I got that signed at the game supper. It's turned in, I'm ready.
We're the without them.
Okay.
So we would need a motion to approve the warning, and then Jane can sign off on it.
But we need to approve the tuition rate too, right?
We'll do that.
Yeah, we can, yeah.
Okay, we're just going out of order.
Oh, we are in order, I'm sorry about that.
Well, tuition rate was, was, um, B. It's okay.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the tuition rate as presented in draft number two.
A second.
Did you? I didn't hear you. Okay, okay. It's like, what'd she say?
Oh, that's right. It is a new number.
We're back to tuition rate.
Yep, we're back. Where's that number?
Okay, yeah.
We got too many papers.
Packet page twenty-three. Sixteen, six, sixty?
Yeah.
I think it changed.
Yeah.
So it was seventeen-three.
Yeah.
And I have a revision for you based on that cut down to sixteen-nine is what I'm recommending now.
Sixteen-nine.
I don't have a handout on it.
For the tuition rate?
Sixteen-nine.
It says sixteen, six, sixty on the, on the warning.
No, that's, that's a difference.
That's the equalized.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, that's different. Totally different number. Where's it coming from?
So where's the?
So, Sue says it's not on here.
Twenty-three.
So I don't have a handout on my change because it's just for that one thing, basically, the cut of that position.
Okay.
So you had it at seventeen-three, and you're changing it to sixteen-nine.
And now I am recommending you reduce that to sixteen-nine, and that is the tuition rate that you approved.
And can you, just so when I make my notes, what, what packet page?
Twenty-three.
Thank you. Okay. No, I'm out of order. First I mean. I'm just, I'm probably missing a page anyway.
So that's, that's Metoway's tuition rate.
Yeah, if you look on the next page, if you look on packet page twenty-four, you'll see how that number is, what's put in, the calculus put into that number.
Now, why'd that go down to sixteen?
Because we reduced the budget by a little over a hundred thousand dollars, so that reduces the numbers that paid up that.
Oh, because of the position.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry.
Sixteen-nine.
Seventeen-three.
That's all, okay.
So Julie, you made a motion to approve the tuition rate for twenty, twenty-one for sixteen-nine?
Yes.
Do we have a second for that motion? Seconded by Scott. Any discussion? I'm sorry, you all said.
So many seconds.
Too many seconds, that's right. Um, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion on that.
Next month, maybe.
Zero.
It won't matter.
Now, do we have a motion to finalize and approve warning number two as presented?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Diane.
Plus I am.
There's a second.
Scott, you want a second?
I'll second.
Oh, okay.
I want to share.
Yay, Cory, then.
Seconded by Cory. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion three, six, zero. Okay.
Okay, yeah, I'll go to, I'm trying to find the packet page number here. I'm going to shuffle a lot of papers here tonight.
Yes, we have been.
So if you go to packet page thirty.
Packet page thirty?
Yeah. And packet page thirty-one is where you're going to see the changes. So, um, it was brought to, this happened, was brought to our attention by a community member, a parent from the Taconic and Green Regional School District that, that we had, were not in compliance with our wellness policy. We were missing a component of that wellness policy. And so we put together a committee to take a look at that missing standard that was, should have been part of this policy. And you did have representation, I believe, Jana Webb served on that committee from, from your community. So these, the wellness policy is a mandatory policy, so it is something that you have to include, that you have to address. And the committee worked with Assistant Superintendent Randy Coolis. They met several times, they had great representation. And the issue they were looking at was on the standards for food that is not sold at a school. So, meaning if there are, is a, your Thanksgiving feast, a party in a classroom.
Goodbye? Did you just say that?
No, the pie.
Oh.
The pie. So the food that is given but not sold, there should be standards around that. So there were, there was discussion, or should there be a set standard that we have? You know, there were some murmurs of nothing with sugar, or no, you know? So anyways, there was a lot of discussion around that. It sounds like the committee was incredibly reasonable, and I have in here, we included the committee's report and their findings and their recommendations. So what you have in your policy is the changes I'm recommending. So if you look on packet page thirty-one, under section four, nutrition guidelines, you'll see in bold D, that's the addition to the policy. So standards for all foods provided but not sold to students during the school day, gives the examples, will be determined at the school level by a school-based wellness committee. So the decision was made that all schools have traditions, all schools, you know, we, we're not going to start to think we can make decisions that would be blanket and interfere with the traditions of a school. So that there should be a wellness committee at each school that determines, you know, or makes recommendations around that standard. So that's what the, how the policy reads. The wellness committee spoke with the principals today, asked them to put that in place. The wellness committee, who probably would meet two times a year, you'll discuss this, look at the recommendations made by the wellness committee. And there's also a requirement that on an annual basis, and this is again mandatory in the policy, the superintendent is supposed to report to, I think you may remember, I think I reported to you back in August, you report to the, report to the board, I may not have, I may have done it just to Taconic and Green because that's where this originated, but report to the board, how are we doing on implementation of this policy? So we added some other language under section five with policy implementation that that school-based well, wellness committee will look at those standards and make a report to the superintendent on an annual basis regarding implementation. So we've kind of, we've kind of, you know, moving that into the hands of the school and making sure that we meet those requirements of the policy. So those are the two, the two changes. And so what happens, we're making revisions, so you go through that same process. You would approve tonight the revisions, and then this will come back again around next month because it still goes through those two rounds.
Right.
The one language part on the last sentence said we'll provide a report to the superintendent or, and/or his designee?
His, her.
We got to change that.
We sure do. Thank you very much, Brooke. Patriarchy, it's always there.
Mm-hmm.
For the patriarchy, it's always there. Yeah. Okay, so those are the, really the two main changes.
Yep, that's it.
So do you need a motion to, uh?
Yeah.
Approve this revision? So moved.
Made by Michael, seconded.
Can we discuss it?
We have a third and a fourth second. It's becoming a problem.
So who is the second?
And Julie.
Okay.
Any discussion?
Yes. I, um, I, I think that I'm, you know, I have a hard time when someone tells me what I can and can't provide for my child to eat, or for my grandchild. And that has happened, and it aggravates me to no end. So this is my forum, I guess, to express that. On the other side, I do not think we should cut the pies from our Thanksgiving feast, so I'm assuming that the school committee would realize the importance of that. And I also feel, I think I read in here something about cupcakes and birthdays and, you know, I just think that sometimes for those kids, it's the only time they get to have a party. And, and again, I think that, you know, I'd be one of those, if a kid needed a cupcake, I'd bring them in so that they could do it, because so many of those children don't get to celebrate, and it is those twenty minutes that a teacher is willing to give up. And so I just think it's very important to be mindful of those considerations. Not everybody thinks it's absolutely necessary to be, no sugar, or how we go about doing those things, I'm, I'm not always sure should be. So I just wanted to be able to express my opinion about that.
And those opinions will be shared at, you know, our wellness meeting. So after hearing this information, I will ask a group of people in our community to meet for the health and wellness. But I know that Jana Webb came back to me based on the discussions, and I think a lot of people felt that same way with equity, with a lot of our kids not having that opportunity to have those experiences at home, and this is the. But I know that, um, Jana Webb came back to me based on the discussions, I think a lot of people felt that same way with equity, with a lot of our kids not having the opportunity to have those experiences at home and this is the only time that they have, like, peers to celebrate their birthday. So that was definitely a voice of some people in the committee.
Is that, when you say to not interfere with, like, traditions, would that fall into that category, like, the tradition of, if it's someone's birthday that they can bring in cupcakes for the classroom?
Right.
So it's, it's not gonna preclude, well, I mean, I'm with, I want to make sure it doesn't.
You know, I need to be able to express that, that I really feel strongly that we need to continue to honor that, that we don't always have to follow the absolute norm, that, you know, I think it's important that those kids have that opportunity or that not everything that gets put in the lunchbox gets taken out because somebody else has deemed it unhealthy for them. You know, I think that if there's an ongoing, and I've taught long enough to know that I've had many a students come in and I look at their lunch and I go, whoa, you know, and you try to talk with them and you try to do whatever you can. And, and, um, you offer other things even, so I think there's a lot of different ways to approach. And I, I think that we as a school have tried to do that. I also know that sometimes I have felt that people have been told they shouldn't eat this because, and I think that that's kind of crossing a line if it's done in a, in a way that's not teaching the whole class but directed as a child. And I, I know that that has occurred, so. So I just want to clarify, this is policy, school provided, not an individual's lunchbox, right? This.
Yeah, you can't comment on what someone's bringing in for themselves, right?
Shouldn't be, yeah.
But it, it does apply for, um, a, a party or some special activity where a parent might bring in, or a family member might bring in some type of food that would be subject to the committee's approval.
So the only thing that we state that they can't be brought in though, if it's like a nut-free, we will say to a parent, you can't bring peanut butter to a classroom or nut products. So we do, you'll see that, that there are some rooms and spaces that we wouldn't allow certain foods based on the health and well-being of other students in our school.
I mean, what the policy, the part that was missing in the policy was saying you have to have a standard for foods that are not sold. So it's not saying what that standard is. That standard could be that we honor the traditions of our school and we, you know, we give guidance to families around, you know, birthday parties, but, you know, these things are allowed on these occasions. So it's just, you know, it's just really, you have to say what that is. And the committee felt uncomfortable saying, we're not going to reach a standard for everybody because schools have different traditions and different approaches and may have different values around that. Who appoints the committee? Is that you appoint the committee, Brooke?
I would ask for volunteers and from a variety of people. But we have lots of teams, like Health and Wellness is one, but we have the Green Team, who are very passionate about recycling, and we have, um, the Social Emotional Team, so every year there's a list of teams and Crisis Team, um, so we have team meetings every week for different things and all teachers and staff members join those teams. Like we have an Extravaganza Team we have, so there's just committees that people choose to be a part of.
Well, I just, I mean, because it does say a diverse group of stakeholders, so I'm assuming that this is not just gonna be teachers. That's right, it should not be just teachers, yeah. Thank you for listening.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion approved, six zero. Okay. So at this time.
And, and yeah, I'm not sure, so this, this executive session, we already, I've already touched upon it when we were, you were asked about the, um, special education costs that were not, um, what was the term?
Eligible for reimbursement.
Eligible for reimbursement, and I told you what that was for. I just want, I was not sure if that was going to come up or not. And I did not want you to ever be surprised if you're sitting in your annual meeting and someone asks you that question, you haven't had, you don't know what that is. So, um, so this is here in case you have anything you wanted to talk some more about that. Um, it is, you know, it's a small group of students, so I'm kind of uncomfortable about having that, I'm not, still not gonna talk about students, but if you had any specific questions, you know, this is here, I don't know if you feel a need for that or not. I mean, the line item is that there are students that opt into this school and because we have allowed that, this cost is ours. That's the bottom line. That's the bottom line. I don't need more than that, if anyone else needs it, that's fine. You're not gonna get a whole lot more than that anyways, but I wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't sure if it was gonna surface.
We decided that would be the policy, so we could, you know, that is what it is, right?
Are we still okay with our decision?
I think we are.
I understand, but I'm not asking that question.
I think we are.
Yeah, good.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess we don't need to do that then.
Okay, there you go.
Okay.
Um, and you have my report starting somewhere.
So many pages.
Packet page thirty-three, um, I guess the one, I just wanna, you know, we'll point out, we'll say, since we're on TV, um, we do have the I Am From Here Community Showing, um, that is scheduled for the twenty-first at six P.M. in the gym. And, um, so we'll watch the, I think the documentary's thirty minutes and then Martha Allen will be here to lead some discussion around that. Can we maybe touch on, um, what a good population for viewing this? I mean, it's open to the community, but should we be encouraging people to leave small children at home, but bring, say, well, here, I mean, what, well, it's. I think it's appropriate for middle school students for sure. Okay.
I'd say sixth grade and up.
Sixth grade and up. Okay. Yeah, that's a good question though.
And we'll have a press release on this?
Yeah, Bob's doing that. But you don't want parents here if they're going to have to bring younger children, is that what you just said? Well, I didn't say that, but I mean, that they, I mean, it's not gonna harm them to see it, but if they want to have their young kids here, but we don't have a, we haven't made a plan to provide care. So should we consider that if a parent wants to come but their children are elementary age and there is no childcare available, are you limiting your audience to how many people? Um, I don't know.
I don't think that's what's being proposed though, and my sense is.
She's just saying, is it, is it going to be a hindrance to someone, is someone gonna think twice about coming?
And my personal feeling, having watched that movie, is why shouldn't anybody of any age be allowed to watch that film? I don't see anything in it that would be so threatening, even to a young, young person.
It was just like, if I am a mom of a three-year-old and I really want to come see this, but there is no situation where that kid could come into this room, am I gonna come, take the chance, am I just gonna stay home? Is it, does it limit our audience? It's not us imposing rules on anybody so much as. Right, that's, yeah.
I don't know what team.
I mean, I'm open to ask staff members, but they, there's a cost to that, they won't come for free.
Right.
I can ask them to come, but they would get their hourly rate to be here.
But they would what?
They would, they would get their hourly rate to be present.
And what are you talking, an hour, an hour and a half?
And not knowing how many, it'd have more than.
If, I mean, it's, you know, it's just something to, to think about, for, for me, it might open a door to five more parents, you know, I'd rather have those five parents here. I don't know.
I know we open that to just our community, but we're inviting this to like T and G, so would that be any kid across the district could come in? Just clarifying, because we are gonna put this bulletin out to, I already have to all the principals, so we want kids coming, or adults coming from all six schools.
I don't know how we would plan for that.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering about, how much.
I don't know if you would then.
Unless you could call ahead.
You're doing that.
You know, unless there was some way that you could get out and.
That would have to have happened yesterday. I mean, it's. Well, then let's not even worry about it.
Yeah, it's not that long, I mean, people can bring their kids.
I think it will probably be fine. Yeah, then let's not worry about it.
I think we're making it more complicated.
Yep. Um, and.
She's standing up and.
So I don't know if there are any other questions, um, you know, it's not a very lengthy report, been mostly dealing with, with budget and if there's any questions, want anything, happy to answer them?
The threshold for the lead is now parts per billion?
Yeah. Yeah.
Is that part of that, like the water, the increased expense because we have to test for this more?
Um, no, no, that's, right now it's not a cost, but in the future, I mean, they're paying this time for the testing, I don't think they'll continue to pay for the testing. So in the future, you'll see that.
It was great to just see in the, her report too, all the positive PR that has been put out by Bob. Um, several things have happened this past fall, Mr. Harmon getting the UVM Teacher Award was great, I put that on Facebook and it reached over like nine hundred people and a lot of positive comments.
That's great.
And then the feast is always a great way to celebrate and some of the other events such as our play. So one of the things that Gnat has been doing for us is putting out these like little reminders of things that are coming, like one little spot, and we're creating one for the I Am Here video that will be put out as well. So these little bulletins are a nice way.
That's great.
Okay. And, um, moved on to the work plan, I did have, I did update your work plan, so you may want to take a look at that, that's on packet page thirty-nine. Yeah, it's been updated. So, um, I just revamped, I know that, you know, we have a practice, we'll have two practice sessions, um, that, you know, Val explained what those are like, so we'll do one of those at our next meeting. Um, then you have your annual meeting, we'll do one again in March. Um, I, um, did want to mention that you are scheduled to meet in Rupert next month for your February meeting and, um, that is an ends reporting, um, session, so, um, Skylah LaBombarde, who is our Director of Teaching Learning and, um, are also, I believe, our data management, um, guy will be here, Bjorn, um, they are, they have been putting together a, um, an annual, like an annual report card and they are going to present that at that meeting to you. Um, it's for the whole BRSU, but, but Metowee is included in that. Um, so, um, you, they don't need internet, but they were, and they will have handouts, but they will be, they will need some place to project, I don't know, what can, what can we do there, Jane, with that?
In the library will be.
Probably move the meeting to here. I just don't, I just don't know.
It's hard to make that work.
It is. Yeah, they just don't, I mean, sorry, I just don't think that the library has, um.
You don't have any surface, I mean, couldn't we just?
Oh, I'm just trying to think of how we could do.
Could you hang a sheet off that back wall by the?
Is it worth hanging a sheet? I, I, I'm being a little lazy at the moment in saying, let's just meet here.
Okay. You're going to be, you'll be in Rupert.
We'll be in Rupert, we'll be in Rupert a few weeks later.
So February third.
Third is.
School meeting here, six thirty.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So that would change.
No, thank you.
And then, you know, the following meeting, it's the budget meeting, he's in Rupert, so that's good. You know, and that's an important one because there'll be a lot of people there, whereas. Yeah.
At the firehouse.
Yeah, that's at the firehouse, yeah. Twenty-six.
And then just a reminder that we normally don't set your April and May dates until after the organization in March, but because Val isn't going to be doing that, we did set those, okay?
And the February twenty-sixth meeting is at seven P.M., not at six thirty.
Seven P.M.
Is that, I'm sorry?
The February twenty-sixth meeting at the firehouse is at seven P.M., not at six thirty. The budget meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Or the, what is it, the annual pre-town meeting or whatever it's called? Okay. Okay. Brooke.
Okay, Teaching and Learning, uh, we, um, have been doing a book study with a standards-based classroom book. Um, the administrative people within the BRSU read it last year, this year we've been, uh, I have been leading some, um, faculty meetings and we're gonna continue that work throughout our, um, in-service time on Fridays. Um, and it's been very successful to have great, um, ongoing discussions about proficiency-based learning. Um, and one of, so we have different things that will be happening throughout the just time, you'll see here that, um, last week we launched a unit plan template and we talked about designing instruction. This week we'll be focused on formative and substantive assessments. And then, um, moving forward, um, there's different parts of the book that will highlight certain things that will ask the teachers to incorporate into their unit plan. So they're kind of having an idea of what they would like to focus, um, on their unit. And it, the process began last week and they'll have, um, over the whole just time to pull it together and we'll be sharing those out in March. Um, some of the things that we're focusing on as an SU is health and wellness and self-care. So we're gonna incorporate that, um, in throughout some of our just time together, but also we have additional time that, um, Mandy Mayer and Kim Donaldson has, um, proposed, which is a little bit of yoga, sewing and a book study. And that will be led, um, on different Thursdays and through the VHI grant, we were able to, um, purchase some of the, um, information, just some of the things like yoga, for instance, is something that, um, a parent will be get paid for to lead that. But we will also have, um, a person coming to do instruction in sewing, so it's kind of a way for, um, the teachers to, um, have fun together and to, um, relax hopefully. Um, another focus for us is really focusing on, um, responsive classroom, which is an ongoing social curriculum that we use here. So I'll be asking all staff to take part in that and there, there's two different dates, um, one in February and one in March that will work, work on that information. Um, but overall, we're just really excited about, um, leading some of the instructional things that we've been, um, working on since August and it's a way for us to collaborate. Some of the expectation in creating the unit plan, we'll be having the teachers, um, working with our Unified Arts, our Special Education and our Reading Specialists, so just a collaboration to support each other in teaching. Um, and the NWEA window has opened for January and it will close at the end of the month and those results will, um, be shared out at the parent conferences, which will be on February sixth. We will be hosting a Geography Bee, uh, our students are participating in the classrooms doing those, um, the events in the classroom and that's for grades four through six and our, um, actual bee will be on January twenty-second. It's always important to highlight how the community uses our building, the Woodchuck Festival will be held here for our local fire departments, February fourth and fifth. And then buildings and grounds, just wanted to let you know, over break, um, we were able to have some painting in our hallways, which is something that we were hoping to do last summer, didn't get to. And it has, it's amazing how much better it looks, but, um, at the intermediate wing, all of the actual wood throughout and it needs to be continuous, so we're hoping maybe over February and April break, we'll continue that work. And Mr. Wood did a really nice job, if anyone, a lot of you go into the multipurpose room, but he cleaned all the fans with this lift and he was able to, um, change out some of the light fixtures and wax the floors so we're ready for basketball. So a lot of great things happened in that space during Christmas break.
Thank you. Okay, board updates. Well, I gave my update already. Okay, we know our next meeting dates, reflection on norms. Wow. I'd just say we did an awful lot in an hour and a half.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
I have maybe a que, I don't know, maybe this should have gone under eight. Uh, I just have a question, um, or looking for some support, I know you write a letter for the, um, report, thank you, that's the word I was looking for, the annual report, which goes out in print. Um, I have just been thinking a lot about, um, this budget and, and my thoughts and feelings on education in general and, um, I have a plan to write something that I can read or, you know, memorize mostly, that I would like to speak at that meeting. And I just, I guess I'm just looking for an okay, I don't want to step on anyone's toes and I don't want to, you know, take attention off of the very serious questions that we're gonna get, but I just, um, I don't know, I'm looking for an opportunity to get on my soapbox, I guess. Very briefly.
Can we know what the message is?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think my general thing, and I, I had an encounter with a member of the public who was speaking about some, you know, not the school issue, just a separate town issue. And there was, um, well, I don't use the school. Uh, was a phrase that was uttered, and I hate that, I hate that.
I don't use the school.
I don't use the school. I don't use the school. I either had children forever ago, and I don't use the school. I didn't ever have children, and I'm never going to, I don't use the school. And I guess the gist of what I wanna say is that you use the school every day. Everybody, everywhere uses the school every day, from getting the right change when you go to the grocery store and pay with cash, to going to a cardiologist and not dying. Everything in between.
I think it's a great message, Julie.
So, that's, I just wanna be able to publicly say that.
Yeah, it's educating the community, not just the people with children. I mean, it's, it's like the basis of...
Well, it's having educated people in our community. It's, it's something that we need.
It's having an educated society.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Which is what public education was founded on.
Yes. So, I would like an opportunity to put that out there.
Could you share with us at the next meeting? I think we'd probably all like to hear it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be, I think that's great.
Great idea.
I do, too.
And probably part of the agenda is that maybe each of you, or some of you, might speak at that meeting, because usually we try to have board members somewhat involved, so maybe...
Yeah, that's, I think that's on our agenda, and our work plan is to talk about that.
Yeah, we usually have, like, the FAQs, we sort of distribute who's talking about which point.
Yep.
So, we'll review all of that on February third. Beautiful. Okay.
I'd like to just, we said this at a couple meetings ago, but just, just how much I appreciate you, Sue, like, taking us through the budget, because, I mean, you just do an amazing job, and it's so helpful. I mean, so, I just wanted to thank you.
Amen.
And I imagine this has been pretty stressful the past month.
It's a little more so than usual.
She still loves it.
It's nice when we can find ways to make it not so painful, so...
It's wonderful to have somebody who's invested in budgeting, who really likes doing it. Huge.
So, I'm now even more impressed.
We're very lucky to have Sue.
I also like, just wanna mention, I like the periodic sandwiches and cupcakes and things. I don't think we should cancel that burgeoning tradition.
This is for me today, this is the foods not sold. It is cake, I thought it was an appropriate night to bring it.
But the meat.
Are we, are we planning on doing some kind of refreshments when we do I Am Here?
Hmm.
Any kind of refreshments, like coffee or anything on that night?
Oh, I Am Here.
When we do I Am Here?
We're both like...
I think we can pull something up. I think it'd be, I would love to be able to do something simple, like, say, water or something, like, refreshments, but I'm not sure about, I mean, the coffee definitely takes time and energy in putting...
But don't do coffee, do water. Water's just wonderful.
Could that be something where someone could have, like, a little stand that's a fundraiser for something, what a basketball team, or, I don't know, just something.
It's only a week out, so it's a question of whether or not you could pull it together.
It's a week out, that's right.
I just wonder if it's an opportunity for someone to sell.
My worry is that, you know, maybe if ten come, or fifteen, it might not be a lot of selling. I mean, we're hoping for, like, twenty people coming, but I definitely think we can put waters out and some type of light refreshment. I can handle that. I'll have someone else go out and get that stuff.
Okay, that'd be great.
Like a pretzel.
Yeah, okay.
Right? So, the thought is there. It's the thought, it's the thought, it's the details.
popcorn. Isn't it popcorn in a movie?
Yeah, actually, you know.
Popcorn would be good.
Okay, water and popcorn.
Who has a popcorn machine?
The school does, right?
Well, you stew.
No, no.
I just wanted to have a joke, she wasn't saying she was making popcorn. No, we were wheeling it down for a big assembly, wheel fell off, crash broke the glass.
Oh, that's too bad.
Do you need a new piece of glass?
I'll pop some or something.
Yeah, maybe. She likes making popcorn.
Yeah, I know. Look, would you, do you need a new piece of glass to have that thing on?
Um, no, I actually think, like...
It's more than that.
It's on its last wheel?
Yes.
Last wheel.
Okay, any public comment? Having said all of that, then, we will adjourn at 8:07.